You will hear the application in order to be here if your name is called out or the application called out. Please come forward to take a seat at the table that we might be all covering. Once you are seated, I will swear in a non-terminating agreement and ask you to agree to proceed to explain what you want to know why. I usually have two questions myself, but my questions answered before I proceed with questions of other members of the board. Once we've all been comfortable with the application, you understand it, I'll open the matter with input from members of the parties, which is the available oppositions in the matter. In the event that there is an application and someone speaks in opposition to it, I'll give the applicant a chance to respond to that. I ask that in any situation where someone is responding to, please refer to their comments through leave and share, rattle them back and forth in the audience. That's disruptive, makes it very difficult to have a meeting. The other matters you need to be aware of are, one, as a matter of the law, for an application to be approved, your party is only in favor of case 401. That's the true argument, not a doubt. Secondly, in the event you are unable to do, your time will limit us to appeal in a 28-day period which begins to run approaching the mention of the meeting. That will be no more than two weeks from now, and knowing how good this is on the way is, it may well be closer to a week. You can call her up and actually get by her how we're doing with the strike from hence. Having gone through the liminal areas, the other, this is not some liminal area. Let me take this opportunity to thank one of our on-serving members who stepped down after last month's meeting due to COVID concerns. Mark Creel has served with many years, he was a hard worker, I appreciate his presence. I think that Dave also over the many years he did as well, the others who wish to go down, I'd also give Mark some honorable. We appreciate your service from members of the public, for all those who have been in handy. The zoning lawyers, the local boards, the bounties, always leave qualified volunteers, a tab like ours, ones on volunteers. If we had to hire some of the older jobs to get done, we would all, if we don't like the taxes now, we would serve on life's end. So, having said that, one matter I believe you managed to forget to do is the mention of the prior meeting. Are there any corrections or changes to the draft you see?
Mr. Cherry does not.
Corrective by the fact that these present reformers is like not a question.
So this is a latter, I think a motion to approve hence?
Is there a second?
No, please, I have a second.
We'll go to formality, we'll go to this one. This is my question. Michelle?
You have given my question directly to the.
I am in favor.
In favor.
In favor. Those are favor and this is well, it is standing because it's not a question. Our first matter on tonight's agenda, and normally this does because we're too suffering from allegations of course I, so I'll be doing the following. Is a continuation of application 405-9 Peter Green, 150 Coronado Street, requesting dimensional variance and favor of hence. You may come forward, I'm going to mistake it at the beginning, but please take your seats and allow I to do that. And this is essentially a repeat of what I said last month, the number of these appear bans. We speak for us, I want to report, needs bear in mind to be a lack of the zoning laws, not affect the resolve of the issue. We think that's a mismatch in the context. The record of the board shows very negative interactions, speak very seriously. Speaking of myself, I believe I speak to all members of the board, stating that it is painful to see this environment or anyone. Have ever our peruse been due to and described by the zoning laws? We have to consider this within the context of zoning matters. It will be the burden of Mr. Sisto to demonstrate that this application, each of the several tests that are forth and sectioned, what 85-69 can satisfy. And it will be the burden of him of opposing the application to demonstrate that one of all of those tests have not been satisfied. Mr. Sisto, please proceed.
Thank you, I agree with you. My name is Anthony Sisto and I represent the applicants in this matter, Peter and Dennis Green. And I will find my comments, and I know my clients too, to the four corners of your zoning ordinance. And I want to start with section 185 dash 3A.
Are you prepared with this, Mr. Sisto?
Oh, I did, yes, I'll be calling on both Mr. and Mrs. Green.
Good evening, do you wish to wear the testimony of the people of the number of members? And Mr. Green, I'm happy to see you back with us and hopefully out of the way. Tony?
Thank you. As I said earlier, I will love to find my comments to the zoning ordinance itself. Beginning with section 185-3A, which is the statement purposes of the zoning laws. And safety is this chapter is designed to achieve the following purposes. A, promoting the public health, safety and general welfare. And the physical trust for an extension of lattice work from 60 to 80 is based on this. And I will also fit it into the four standards that you need in section 185-69, which will prove the application, as well as section 185-71. And as you know, in our ten zone, so long as the fence is more than 30 feet from the front yard, front lot line, 6 feet is permissible for a fence. This fence in the front on the side is in excess of 30 feet, exactly in excess of 40 feet from the front yard. And I think that is relevant to the application itself. So, before you hear from the Greens, I just want to say that the four standards that the hardship which the applicant seeks to leave is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land and structure, and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area. And it's not due to the physical or economic disability of the applicant. The purpose of this application is unique because in the housing ordinance, the purpose is to make sure that the use of adjoining properties or neighboring properties doesn't create induces in the surrounding area. And in fact, the zoning ordinances and theory of zoning is grounded in induces law. And that's what is the driver of this application now. Because frankly, the Greens have been subjected to harassment and nuisance on this. You have the police reports, you're getting the green rings on that. Their attempt to mitigate that was to put lattice work up. 80, and originally that was the 10, but they brought it down to 80. They did not get a permit for that, they were cited by the building manager. The response was to file this application here and ask for bearings. They will tell you when the time comes, when they're speaking, that this is actually mitigating the situation. It hasn't weakened it, but it has mitigated the situation. It's true of the fact that on Coronado Street, particularly in this area, the neighbors of the property exposed by the house exposed by two. Under B in section 185-69, the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant, it does not result inherently from the desire of the applicant to realize their right to gain. This isn't their right to gain. This wasn't something that they, does not, they commulated to increase the value of the property. This more has to do with their safety and, basically, their health and just trying to mitigate the stressful situation. B doesn't apply. C, that the surrounding, that the rating of the request for bearings is not all to the general characteristics of the surrounding area for a period of 10 or purpose of this chapter of a comprehensive plan. As I stated, section 185-3A is to promote, you know, the public health safety, you know, and that includes residents like the Greens. They will tell you what's stressful in the situation within, and how this has maybe some of the effects that they had to the situation in general domain. And also on this, this is anything that had the prior actions to do with, 10 states have been here for in excess of 10 years of infection, quite a long period. And that only to be green is the least believed necessary, as I said. This is a two-foot extension on six of fence, it will justify why 80 is the minimum amount that's required to achieve their goals here of trying to get some privacy and mitigate some of the effects that happen to the property. Final, is section 185-71. And that is, the applicant has the burden of proving that the hardship to be suffered by the owner of the subject property showed no win and merit in the means. And I will submit you after hearing from it. And you've seen the police reports, notice that this is more than merit in the means. This, and actually, if you take a look at the police reports that you have, this lattice work has had a mitigating effect on these situations. So, to me, if the application is denied, it will be more than merit in the means of that. And I will conclude for you here, from the Greens, the matter of law, I understand that people have a First Amendment right, and they have free speech. I understand that. And this isn't about free speech, because it's an honor right that people have, and that's peaceful and quiet enjoyment of their own property. And quite frankly, as you will hear, some of these attention-free speech have been directed at one person. And actually, to that door of one person, Lindsay Orton, that day. And I only add that because I think this is an appropriate response by the Greens to make it so that they can be some type of coexistence in this property, and I ask the board to consider that. To me, and during this long time, that's what zoning is all about. It's to try and accommodate the interests of partners, not for one or the other, but in this service stance. Just to protect their privacy, their peace of mind, and their health on this thing, and they show themselves to it. So that, I'd like to turn it over to Peter Green, so that he can tell you what's been going on, why he thinks that this is important for his family, and why he thinks it is in his own voice. And I will not ask any questions, I think the average is best, and you agree with it. Peter?
My name is Peter Green, 150 Coronado Street, here in New York. As you are most likely aware, we have a situation between myself and my neighbor that's been going on now for some 10 months. Prior to that, we lived next door to our neighbor without incident since we moved in in July of 2012. For whatever reason, we can't really know for sure, that changed in January of 2021. And our neighbor began to behave, I would call it, strangely, oddly, and certainly towards us. At the beginning of this, were signs that were taken, political signs, that everyone had the right to their political point. We were aware of our neighbor's political point. We did not try to engage with our neighbor on anything to do with politics, quite the opposite. We had conversations and discussions that we would not lose. So, for example, we had no political guard signs. Did we have a Black Lives Matter flag? Yes, we did. Like a little flag that you would see in someone's garden, a little colorful flag that said Black Lives Matter. But my neighbor, after the results of the election, took the guard signs in front of your garden and put them in a window that is very close, a few feet from my wife's garden. My wife is a beautiful person, and she does beautiful things, including her garden, which she had there in that part of my yard for about five years without incident. This window was very close to her garden, so really, and then it sort of grew from there. But in large part, my initial thought putting up the fence was to preserve her ability to go out into her garden in peace. On the 20th of January, we received in the mail this round of disturbing letter. We said that.
I'm assuming that is part of what is in the, to the package?
Yes. It says round of disturbing things. That I guess us, that we're ranked, we voted for Congress, we're discussing, so it was disturbing. We did not know who wrote or sent the letter. Well, we were disturbed by this, so we contacted the police. We thought that that was the right thing to do, was to contact the police. The police didn't intend to do our neighbor, and in the very first police reports, my neighbor admitted her involvement with the letter. She says, "Oh, I'm kind of responsible," I had no. Later, of course, for example, in a father's, he was a teenager, she said she loved the water.
You focused on what was put in the back door, and what was said in the back door that led to you putting up the letter?
Sure, so after she put some signs in the window very close to my wife's garden, and after the letter was received and we had told to the police, the behaviors were worse. She began to do strange things, all that we know before it's can, is when she was in her garden. Again, my call was to protect the peace of my wife and her ability to go out in the garden. So my really, my first offer was to block that window. That window, from less, the harassment came. That was all I was really thinking, block that window, so that she can walk in her garden, and do what she loves to do in peace, and we could hopefully get back to our normal life. What ensued has been 10 months break for us, great.
Has the lattice work made the effects of what you're talking about?
Yes. Has it, if we solve the situation, no one would have access, I should do it 28A. Late in the summer, we had one day that was really great. One day, when we went outside, and the four of us, my wife, myself, my 10-year-old, and my 13-year-old, were all in a pool together. Two hours, swimming slash enjoying each other, not thinking about all these problems. I don't think that it would have been possible for us to do that if our neighbor was able to just stand on the other side of the fence and glare at us. And the two feet of lattice prevents her from being able to do that.
Is that the minimum amount of lattice work you mean hurting? Is that the minimum amount of lattice work you need to accomplish the goal here?
I think that it really does have, it really is as effective as it could be because it prevents that direct sight line from her, us, and us from her. Right, it prevents that direct sight line. And my wife goes out in her garden, and unfortunately, I really believe my neighbor goes out very often, right after she sees my wife off her garden. And she does, and says, it's very disturbing that it's. But how much worse it would be if she could just stand there and glare at us, but with the two feet of lattice, since most people are not that tall, like 80 tall. It really does prevent that direct sight line, and it really does help a lot for us to just be able to go out in our backyard like people should. Now, I have two kids. Thank you for wishing me well, COVID, we took COVID very seriously. My wife has diabetes, my mother is 88 years old. We took COVID very seriously, we kept our kids home from school, I also stayed home from work for a year. Going out into the backyard was one of the few things that my kids couldn't do during this time. And I'm sorry to say that for a lot of it, they were really afraid, they were afraid. You know, again, my neighbor had the right to her political opinion, but she flew flags in the backyard, not in the front. One in particular that showed the former president holding a machine gun and a rocket launcher. My son is 10 years old. He said, "Do they want to kill us?" 10-year-olds shouldn't have to deal with this stuff. It shouldn't be a part of his life. He should be worried about things like, is he going to get in trouble, bringing too many fucking things, something like that. He shouldn't have to be worried about his mother really suffering from almost constant abuse. Does it solve every problem? No. But does it make it much more possible for us to just live in our house, for my kids to go out in the backyard without keeping in? It does, it does, it does make a difference, it does make a difference. If I didn't think it made a difference, I wouldn't be here. Right, it's been, what, three or four times? I had contracts, we had the site plan, you know, obviously, I believe that this is making a big difference, trying to help preserve my ability to stay in my house.
Are you asking this board permission, or asking this board to bring dimensional matters?
I am, I would ask, please let me keep my fence. I'm just, I'm a school teacher, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not an expert in the ways of the town and its ordinances. I built my fence to protect my family, to protect my wife. I'm sorry if I broke the code, I'm here asking forgiveness, I didn't know. I would very much like to keep my fence, please.
Would you agree with the condition, if the application is to be granted, would you agree with the condition to remove the lattice work that we apply to you or your neighbor, the new resident presentation?
Absolutely.
Are there any questions for either myself or my client?
Let me ask Mr. Sisto a question about that last, yes, for authoring condition. You and I had some, I've talked about that some time ago. That, that the applicant is conditioning your request for a week upon and when to remove it at such time as either the neighbor or they take it properly.
Right, and the problem is that that's not really something that's authorized by zoning conditions that go to departments. The conditioning goes to the property. I have given it some thought, and you are able to put conditions, reasonable conditions, including time. So if you take a period now and say, you know, we're going to grant this for only four or five years, or ten, or two years, whatever, and, you know, then they have to come back if they wanted to keep it after that time. I think you could do that, you could condition it for a specific period of time, but you can't tie it in any way to who is living there.
That does address one of the concerns I had, which is we're dealing with relief funds with the land that is normally perpetual. You go offering to make that limited, and I appreciated that offer. Where, speaking to myself, where I need some assistance in seeing how the relief here, the extra heights of the fence, is a matter of land rather than the people involved. Normally, when we have fence issues and we do get trouble here, they relate to the nature of the land, the houses, things of that nature. I don't see that in this case, this appears to be involving the people only, as I said at the beginning, that isn't what they are purging. This work, civil court, yes, it is a matter, but we are dealing with the land issues. And conceptually, people come and people go, and that should not be the guiding light. It should be the land and what is appropriate based upon the land, the house on it, the street, or something of that nature.
So, just to fill on that, I have the same concerns with Chairman.
Can you bring your microphone?
I'm sorry, I have the same concerns with Chairman, this for reasons. 185-69A, it's the hardship, and it says, "The hardship which the applicant seeks to leave is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area." So, in order to pass that test, it has to be, in my mind, something with the land and not just the people. So it doesn't become, "My neighbor's part of the dog, fathers and me, so I want to do this." You know, in the past, we looked at fence issues, and I remember some that had closed bodies of work, that were part of the property, that were security issues. It may be that the rain on one side of the fence is significantly higher than the other side of the fence, so that 6 feet changes per each side of the fence. But something of that nature is what I'm looking to hear in order to actually tie this to zoning and not just a matter of my, have my other people. But as a zoning board member, I need to understand it to light zoning and give a passive to light zoning and not just personal everything.
Let me answer to two ways. The first instance, if the condition is acceptable for a timing, that would be acceptable to find spiders who be flying with the ability to come back and extend it necessary. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is the analogy to the North and North, to me, is not similar to the situation that we have here. That's noise, and that's not, that's something that actually, this is, is if it were just a noise situation, I recommend to the client not to put up lattice work rather than put up a sound dead end, things by the fencing, which we know you can do with the chase application, or with appropriate shrubbery. They can't do that here. This is a visual thing, this is directed at them. And to me, it's not the land, it's always the use of the land. And in this instance, even though it's residential use, that use is being used to harass and annoy my clients. And this is, to me, is an appropriate response on the, on the effort to minimize that. And I don't see any difference if, if I own property and I'm allowing a lord to rain on another's land, and they want to put up a fence in there. I understand it, that's a nuisance, that's something that could happen in some of them. This is the same thing, it's just a different and unique form. And that's why I think it's appropriate on the 185-69A, because if it was just the land, we'd never be here. It's always how the land is used and how it can be used. Unfortunately, this land is being, the neighbor land isn't just being used for residential use, it's being used for more. It's being directed by client, that's the problem. And I understand that, you know, you can take a look at it and step back and say, gee, you know, we can't do it completely, we just have to take a look at the land. But this land is being used in ways that this board can utilize the ordinance, 185-3A, 169, 185-69A. So that they can protect it, and if there are concerns about it, that there'll be a eight-foot fence perpetuating over the area, and times change, the fence change, I think it's appropriate to put the timing on it. And that will mitigate the issue, not stop the problem, but mitigate the problem. And I think that's appropriate for this board to do under the ordinance.
I have two follow-up questions. One, you segued perfectly into a question we always have when it comes to defenses, which is, can you do the same thing with a hedge? Privacy, security, whatever it is you're after, because there's very little regulation from zoning on a hedge. So, A, can it be done with hedge, and if not, I'd heard say it can't be, but exactly why not, so we can understand it. And then the second is, you bring up the term use, which to the general public, that means one thing, to the zoning ordinance, it means a very different thing. Is there some use under zoning that's occurring there that brings it out of residential use and into another use?
Well, let me answer two ways. The first thing is, and I'm going to answer with the hedge. By the time the hedge gets to the, to the park or to the, having that on it, and I don't, again, in person, familiar with the field, by the time you get any arborist to put that tool, it's common to be on five or six years, that's the first thing. So you know what, maybe in the future, that's something that they'll take a look at.
And I understand the cost of putting in more mature arbor lighting, but this is a world of GoFundMe. I would think you could get a landslide behind. I would think you could get a landslide behind something like that. I don't know for sure, but it's, it's an idea.
It, it, it's an idea. But it, to me, that goes to the same thing. If that's not acceptable, then this should be acceptable to a particular of the timing. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is I, I may have missed most of our use. This isn't a use. I mean, we're zoning on use. This is a misuse of one property, and it's directed at someone else. And this is Eric, and correct, the misuse.
So in fact, I'm looking for a zoning reason. So, and going back to the hedge versus fence, you bring up a good point. Why do you have a ten-foot tall hedge and not a ten-foot tall fence? I don't know that, and I didn't write the ordinance, the town or the ordinance. We're just here to interpret it. But I do know that currently the ordinance, you could have an eight-foot arbor lighting running down that entire fence line. So the idea is to create visual privacy. There's potentially a way to do that where you don't even need to talk to us.
Understood. Understood. But then that creates other issues on the, 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 the project. For instance, the garden is right up against the, uh, right up against the fence. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I go back to what I say. That's not a problem. Then this shouldn't be a problem. And secondly, basically, the, we, uh...
The ordinance doesn't read that, though. You're saying that, everyone is hearing that. The ordinance does not read that way, and we live by the ordinance.
Okay, now, again, the ordinance is the second. The other thing is, you're basically, uh, proposing, uh, a solution that may not be possible to the ordinance, because it's an economic factor in there.
And that, and you know economic factors don't apply when it comes to directing the ordinance.
When you're saying it's an alternative, that might not be. You're saying this is something that you can do. That's not something that you can do. This is something that you can do, and then we get to the ordinance. I want to add back to my reason, the, uh...
You know, that's great in 185-69A, and it's not due to this board economic disability of the applicant. So we can't consider the economic end of it. I'm trying, I'm trying to find some solution in the realm of options and chaos and everything that's going on that's, that's potentially going to help your clients.
I, I, I understand that. And, but here's my point. If they're not proposing, if they were proposing to do something, that'd be one thing. But you're proposing that they do something and saying, oh, the ordinance says that, you know, you can't go back to economic disability. But that's not, that's not for you. You're proposing an alternative that they might not be able to do. That's the first. The second thing is, is, and I can talk back to this again. I'm looking at section 185-3A promoting the public health, safety, and general welfare. The testimony of Mrs. Green has won quite a few stories. She's wanted the help of his family. They escaped, I mean, there was, there was such a, they had, that they may be in danger. And the third thing is the general welfare. Now, this is something that they're proposing to do right now, not planning jobs that might not be able to go in for, who knows, men. They can get into arborways now. And, uh, this is something, uh, that goes to the general welfare of the community. And it goes all the way, by the way, because I, I noticed in, in the, uh, letters, she was complaining about, uh, uh, things going for the roof. If that's the case, then they should be in a position to do this. This has been an attempt, a piece of peace in that area, and it's an immediate solution right now, and it's not, uh, a hypothetical. And I think that's something you can take a look at, rather than saying, there may be possible alternatives here. And I think that's something you have to focus on. And that's what I take a look at. That's what the zoning ordinance is all about. Promoting the, the public health, safety, and general welfare. And I can hold three of those points are it. Not only, not only that, 185-3A can I do, with this common sense solution that mitigates the problem here. And that's, that's what I'm coming with now.
Let me note that the concern that Mr. Law and I are raising terms of zoning ordinance exists, would exist, quite a part from an opposition by day. That tends to affect our appreciation of what is happening, but that is not determined to, because the ordinance commits and, uh, says outlining those elements, and it always has been, or had fence height, uh, relief, something related to the land or where the buildings are situated in mind. And I'm just not seeing that in this case. But, um, Michelle, do you have any questions?
I don't have a question as much as a statement, I guess. I mean, for me, when this ordinance was created, it wasn't during a pandemic. So I didn't appreciate their need of wanting to have, uh, you know, their own peace in their, in the backyard. So, and then there was, it sounds like from 2012 to 2021, we did have a relatively peaceful situation. So I would support the idea of having a time limit, but, I mean, that's just my...
Okay, you can go ahead and say, we're trying to raise questions with the applicant and discuss it with ourselves.
I don't have any questions.
Uh, any questions?
My one question is, the distance to, how far back is the, the, the distance?
It's over. It's in excess of forty feet. Uh, we're an engineer, we measured, uh, the, uh, bump of the house being forty feet from the road. Uh, the fence is about five feet back from that, but we did not give the dimension there. Uh, in the arden zone, the, the six-foot fence height, it's in, it's, uh, thirty feet from the block line, in this one, the front block line.
My question is, do two-foot laths in the front of the house?
Yes, that's the first one for this. But, but just, you can just move aside, not...
I would be willing to take out two-foot laths in front of the house if I was able to keep two-foot laths on the side. It would not make things better. Where there is an annual from, again, my neighbor's house was very close to my west garden. Very close, five feet, six feet. The reason I include in kind of broad, is there, there are sight lines from her side windows, from which she was harassing us, that would go around that corner and into my west garden. I tried my best to change my original design, make it fit with what I understand is precedent, and to make it more aesthetically pleasing. I trimmed it all out with cedar, very layered. It's not something I think that stands out when people drive down the road because when I turn, you know, I would set back quite a bit and follows the line. I'm not thrilled to take that out. But the most important part for me would be the side, because again, and there is, I think, a bit of a, of a, of a incline that allows my neighbor, when she saw the other side of the six-foot fence, it doesn't really see when she's harassing me. But it has sight line clear, because my yard, and I've heard about story while I'm getting pool, that where, you know, we would feel very, very vulnerable where we did not have, um, two-foot laths.
So your feeling is that her backyard, is that a higher elevation, sun degree, or backyard?
Slightly yes.
Because there's some additional doorway to see over a six-foot fence?
Correct. And, and again, I, I'll go back to my original raised arden for this fence, which is the window and my west garden. Right, the proximity there is, is acute. And, you know, four-foot laths seem to stream. I tried to be pleasing to her support, so I, I moved out, eighteen, I trimmed it off aesthetically pleasing. And it, and it effectively does prevent that direct sight line on my way there working or driving, that, the first thing would be right there in the window where I was, where, not when she was walking. And I would say online, sometimes is, is real.
Is the window to which you're referring, the first floor or second floor of the residence?
First floor, there is only the one.
Okay. Yeah, it's a little higher than that, I mean, just to be that...
But I think that speaks to, um, is the result of, of point that if, you know, my neighbor's house is a little higher, uh, so then, a little higher, it's not in line.
How close is your neighbor's house to your fence?
Six feet, six, seven, seven, eight feet, not long to be near.
And how close does the fence are? What is the fence in relationship with your property, like, you know?
I believe the fence is on my property.
I saw that, and I had no thought of it, it was clear on the door.
Yeah, the fence has been there for a long, long time.
Are you pretty confident about the six-foot number?
Of my fence, or the...
Of fence, so your neighbors...
You know, um, not ten, less than ten, to be sure. Again, I measured it, less than ten, quite close.
So you're in part ten, maybe?
My understanding is that, um, the space on the side, Thomas, is here, can be quite small, relatively speaking, can be quite small. Just sort of, there's, there's a, there's a metal tape, you know, to chain the fence. What's that, three feet? And then there's a piece of chain fence, it's maybe like another three feet. That's all it is.
So in our ten zoning district, the side yard is a minimum of nine feet or ten percent of frontage, and it would be a greater risk of it. Tony, you are going here, so I'm wondering if there's potentially, uh, you know, or use of side yards, or the neighbor's house is actually closer to, uh, the applicant's property that typically be occurring?
Yes, spatially, I'm on that, though. It seems to me that the, the six feet is a movement. I didn't check, uh, to see if they got a variance or, uh, letting a side yard for when the house was built. Uh, this is an established neighborhood, you've been in a point sometime. So I'm not, not so sure that, uh, the side yard forms the arden zone.
All right, and then Tony, I have one more question for you. You've been in front of us probably every month for almost twenty-plus years that I've been on this board. Uh, so you know what comes next? You know that I or someone else on this board have to read into the record, 185-69A, and Andy makes us use the word because, and then we have to go into a whole series of findings of fact. So could you help me out a little bit on findings of fact from a hardship? And how it is to be characteristics of the subject land or structure, and not to the characteristics of the surrounding area? I'm not a lawyer, I'm a, I'm a pre-teacher, this is every day, all day long. The vocabulary here does not lie.
Well, I think you, you, you push your finger on it, and you'll answer your question, particularly when it comes to 185-69A. Uh, as you noted, and as, as Mr. Green specified, uh, the property is, is higher on the other side. And that puts the green property at a lower area, a lower relative to this property. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is that the, uh, neighbor's house is, uh, uh, most likely closer, again, based on Mr. Green's testimony, uh, to the, uh, side of, uh, the green property, uh, most likely closer than the, you know, side yard set that, uh, would be. And based upon that, that is a hardship. And it's not the general characteristics of the surrounding area, but it's the unique characteristics of this subject land. The fact that it's in such close proximity to a property that has a greater rating than it does in a house that is closer than it should be in an arden zone. And I think that's the hardship there. And it's not through the physical rate, economic disability of the applicant. Certainly not putting up classes, uh, but it is a protective of what is going on in the neighborhood. And I think that means, uh, standard of the section, 185-69A, and I think it goes to findings of fact that support that urgency. Thank you very much.
Glad that you'd like your reaction.
So I took a, a drawing by, it appears that the lattice is only on the west side of the property, which you have the front on the street side, and also the, which is the neighbor's...
That's correct, yeah. And there's nothing in the rear?
Yeah.
Um, could you tell me a little more about the use of the backyard? Uh, I know you mentioned the gardens in that part, I can see them on the block plan. Is there anything else in the backyard, like mentioned pool? Um, why you couldn't move the garden somewhere else, and why you saw that part of the yard? If you could just sort of walk through the flow of the backyard, what you want?
Sure, no worries. When I got this house, it, it had, um, a man with a family with two small children. And I walked into the backyard for the first time. I thought, this is fantastic. It's a big backyard, like my own child. It's a place for kids to run around and grow. One of my thoughts, as I designed where the garden is located, is to preserve the length of the backyard so that my kids could enjoy the way kids live, to, to run around the backyard. And in fact, going back to the idea that this is during the pandemic, at one point, my kids were riding their vises back there, because we were low to let them out of our sight. So my yard is not particularly deep. It's fairly shallow, if you will, but it is wide, as wide as my property is in front. My front yard is deeper than my backyard is. So that, that is, that is the attraction of the backyard, the use of the backyard. The primary use of the backyard is for my children to grow. That's the primary use of my backyard. And the garden is situated such outside my house that it does not disrupt that length of, of what I have, of what I have. And, and it's worked out very well for many years. And my, my west garden was there, my neighbor was there, we didn't have a problem. The fact that my neighbor's window was so close was not an issue for five years since I put the garden in. Only recently, but again, very scary how close that window is up there. The green garden was right there, such like that. So to move the garden really would totally change the nature of that backyard. My estate backyard, my kids didn't come around it, which is really the best thing I have.
Uh, you mentioned the pool. Is that, um, is not into the block plan? I'm assuming it's sort of in the neighbor patio area, or something?
Yeah, my pool is not, uh, thank you. My pool is not, like, in-ground pool. It's not a particularly big pool. It's, it's essentially, uh, an oversized inflatable pool, uh, but it's equal. But I think we, we want it to be eighteen, fifteen, fifty feet, I think kids got bigger, but it's the kind of thing when the wind comes, I take it down, drop it out.
I, I know it was a, a, a ground pool that I could see from the street, or something of that nature.
Yeah, it's, no, it's not a grand thing, but it's a point plus.
Okay.
Tony, the two, the connection that appears to be along to tie this into the zoning ordinance is the difference in elevation of the properties. I can recall two part elevations, which are balanced and tried and forced. However, each of those cases, community demand status rationale, we could verify that. Here, this came up tonight, uh, we only understood through this testimony. I was looking for that, so I had no sense as to, you know, how to validate that. And so as our two pieces of evidence, I'm having the difficulty using that as substantiation for the decision.
Well, uh, of course, looking at before you, was what Mr. Green said. And, you know, I, I gotta tell you from my own perspective, ancillary. That was just by way of explanation as to why the, uh, was needed on it. I did not have a board engineer who would, uh, you know, set out the elevations on, uh, outside the property, which, uh, enough, we barely get to show where the property was, the fence, fence was on the line. So that's what we've done here. But you have, uh, well, Mr. Green says, we don't know that it's exact. It's just by way of explanation as to why the lattice work is needed on this. And I think it's fairly obvious from the drive by, if the house is close by, your window is right there, too, and you do have some photograph showing that.
Thank you. Do any of the board of directors, people, or representatives to the public? Or is anyone in the ballot, so this speaker, vapor, or composition? Uh, Tony, what I'm...
Can you sit down?
Yes. Find a safe place for you all, and you can chat for a while. And I ask those who make the meeting, those second-sap drivers, bear in mind that we're in the zoning district and land has, has a football line, folks, come on. And that's where we, we, uh, basically, if I introduce myself, and I'll show you later.
Sure, my, my name is Claudia.
Uh, last name?
Tral, T-R-A-L, T-R-A-L, A-U-B-I-S-A-L.
And you live... And you live, this is for the record, uh...
Of course, for the record. So, I'm in the process.
Okay, can you swear the testimony you brought to give to the group of all to know about the truth?
The testimony I'm about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and I'm about to prove it. Um, and I am just very, not to speak completely directly, actually, because I think there's something else here that we need to talk about, we need to look at, and we must not be shocking. Because we talk really nice and quietly, but I do want what I'm saying on the record, that on record, to take it. And harp-like, I am ashamed, and I am blown away that I was safe places already. Um, so many of us. Empathy? You have no empathy. You do not know what empathy is. Empathy is, I understand what you're feeling, I feel with you, I move with you, I support you, and I understand, that is what empathy is. Pity, sympathy, make, empathy, absolutely not. The optics here is that we have one, two, three, four, five, I'm sorry, I know it's a better word. Six, and seven, eight, white people making rules that were written absolutely positively by white people to protect white land. They were written to protect white land, mostly wealthy white land. And they wanted their, like, nice little fences, they wanted everything to look nice, and that's why they were written. To watch a black woman sit here with her spouse and have to beg you, beg you to put up a two-foot lattice so that their children are not scared of a gun facing them. And, and I'm their next door neighbor, and they have been racially, racially harassed per se. Some people, to take this back about ten years, I was sitting in their neighbor's yard. I was sitting in their neighbor's yard, the last time we ever sat in their neighbor's yard. Because they moved in, and their neighbor looked over, there you are, into, there you are, and said, oh yeah, very wonderful, no surprise. That's the last time I ever went into that house. That's the family that you are protecting from a two-foot lattice. A black woman is sitting here and begging six white, oh, I'm sorry, nine, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, white people. Please, can we please put up two feet so that we are not harassed every single day? Taking that four hundred years. Really, you shouldn't be ashamed that you are making a rub on your feet because of a rule that was written ten years later than I have to say that by white people to protect white land. So shame on you. I will not stop this, whatever you decide to do. They aren't even asking to build a disgusting name, they have beautiful lives, darling. They are asking to protect themselves and their land from continual harassment, and they are begging you, and they've been begging you for months and months and months. And you sit there, and you ask about pools, and you ask about, is that the ninety? Exactly sixty, exactly whatever, who's going to be lucky, we are all called white people for white people. We need to stop, and I will stop, I'm done with this, I'm just gonna sue you. I will stop. We need to stop, look at the rules that are made. I can take this back to our day, I'm Mr. King, and then one of the gorillas on the table. We need to look at the rules that were made, who they were written by, and we need to be brave enough, we need to be brave enough to stand up and say, well, those rules actually do not make sense here, land, person, city, whatever, they don't make sense. So I'm asking you to be brave and stop looking suspicious, stop looking confused. Be white men and women who actually come from Barrington, you have a diversity community, you come from Barrington and say, you know what? These rules were written for black women in this city. So we're gonna stand up, we're gonna look at them, and we're going to make change, and let it happen.
Let me know, as I stated at the beginning, dealing with a flat used issue I was only with, to discuss the best I have to be, try this one through. If you wish to address comments to the town council, to change the ordinance, that is your right. Or should the state, with respect, we do not create the ordinance, we're enforcing it, or doing our best. Is there anyone else who can pay for all of this?
Good evening, my name is Dr. Patricia Ritchie, I'm from Branson, Rhode Island. And I hadn't planned on speaking.
Uh, I'm sure I will say the truth, although it's been a long time.
I swear everything that I will say is the truth, I won't cheat, I want the truth. Um, but this brave woman has inspired me to come forward. I don't think I can say anything more eloquently than she expressed. However, I feel, I think this evening, actually, because I'm a good friend of Marcia Rainey Bassett, who posted something about this meeting this evening. And I feel that too many times, white people stand by and do and say nothing when something like this is happening. And as she said, this woman is imploring, this family is imploring you to stand up and show some guts when this is happening in your time. So I reiterate that I am here as a white person to stand and say that this is horrific. I'm embarrassed to be a Rhode Islander, and I'm embarrassed to witness this. And don't hide behind, you know, your rules, because this is very basic and it's very disturbing to anyone who does have a sense of empathy, or any modern woman. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sean Gaimoni, I live at eighty-five, Alton, Blaine, here in Barrington. I've also been excited to come.
Why, you got a little closer to the mic, sorry. The hand is speaking.
Sure. My name is Sean Gaimoni, I live at eighty-five, Alton, Blaine, here in Barrington. Um, I spearhead the election, I'm the president. Um, I didn't expect to speak this evening, I don't, I, I completely agree with everybody that I said on the map degrees. Uh, but one thing that I, I just wanted to say to the board is, I think you do have the senior power to provide forbearance. I think the board has provided forbearances in the past, precedent has been set. I'm a perfect example of that. At eighty-five, Alton, Blaine, I was before you two years ago. I think all the people on the board that they still remember, I was trying to maintain the fence that was on my property long before I bought it. And when I came to put the board, uh, to ask for a variance, I wasn't aware to find out what was given. Um, and it was to put a ninety-six foot tall fence up within it, far within it, through the view of the room. Uh, and it went on for a little while, and someone spoke up at that meeting and said, well, how did the fence get there to begin with, because I don't know about the house? And looked up and saw that there was a variance that was given for that fence to be going up at my house, and that he decided it was only maintain that variance. So my point is this, you have an opportunity to provide variances. The three employers have given you all that you need to know to interpret the law, to protect these people in a common sense way, and give them peace, provide experience. I would ask that you look back maybe at the variance that was provided at my house to find out why we do that with that. Was it something, was it something simpler to what they had going on? What, what the law and the way it's being interpreted, the way it's being cited in here? So that you can provide some peace and some comfort for this family as well. You guys have the power, the power to do this, you've done it in the past, you've set precedent in the past during this time. And I think you can do it every time, and that's all. Thank you, very much.
Is there someone else who can go down?
Good evening, um, my name is Amy Seeho, um, property address is twenty-eight five, Blaine. Um, I actually didn't expect to speak, but, um, and I don't, I'm to these zoning boards, I never, so... This is a first for me, but I have to say, I was just, oh, sitting here and listening to all of this. It, it seems a very, uh, easy thing for you to agree to allow this last word on there. I can't understand it, I can see, um, things keep being thrown up as to why it shouldn't happen, you know? Um, you know, worried about, um, you know, what the use is, and we're, we're talking about land versus use. And I think the lawyers certainly addressed that issue clearly, uh, but then still things keep getting thrown up. So I, the optics on this just are terrible, absolutely terrible. And I can't understand it other than I, the color of, of her skin. I can't, I, I have no idea why this is, um, you keep throwing skin opposition to this. So the optics on this are really bad. And as the gentleman has said, you have the ability to, you know, allow this to, um, go down to put the last word on top of the fence, and I can't understand why you would say yes. You know, I can see why you made it, you know, go ahead. It makes no sense to me. So I am here just in support, and I, I really hope this, this, um, ends up, you know, happening because I just can't understand why it, it makes absolutely no sense. Lawyer made a perfectly clear case, I can't even understand why they had to pay for the lawyer. I mean, that to me is ridiculous, they want money, they must have been spent here for noise. So, I, like you're saying, I'm here in support of it, and I'm embarrassed. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name, my way down here today.
Uh, can you introduce yourself, please?
What's that?
Introduce yourself, please.
My name is Jay Ega, and I live directly right across the street from the lab.
I recognize your name, but...
My picture window looks out. Uh, maybe I'd like to create a request for a channel fence. It's further my voice, so I wouldn't have to look up and see five minutes of pedal for that. Looking back at it. Uh, seen some pretty rotten things there. And I know some things, that there is a lot of bias coming from that list. And I know the reason why we want to harass campus. And if a lousy two-foot extension that can irradiate kids while having to see trouble with a gun, it just doesn't make sense not to allow it. I've lived in Barrington since nineteen fifty-something, I always thought, through progressive tunnel. And I think we should stand up against what's going on over here. Now, I think, my picture window looks out into this. And I'm a louse, I mean, used to be engineer, now, and then I became an artist. I think that fence is beautiful. It's gorgeous, the color of the walls and the shingles and the house, it's absolutely beautiful. I like looking up my picture window on my computer and being able to see that fence, I can, uh, sit myself so I don't look all over the other way and see those horrendous and vicious signs that she looks out. So, uh, I am all in favor of this. It's taught of what's right. And after eighty-four years, I think I've got a good idea of which way. Thank you.
Is anyone else who wishes to speak in respect to that allocation before us? Yes, sir.
Anne Strong, fifty-five, TM, I applaud the board for sticking to...
Uh, do you swear?
Uh, I thought that I swear, uh, to tell the truth, thank you for that. I applaud the board for, um, sticking to the fact that this is about the property. This zoning is about the property, and, um, that there are people who think it's not is testament to the need for more civics education in our classrooms. If you look at the GIS system, um, and look at these two properties, they are in the same type of contour. There is no hill on these properties. Um, if you are considering making the decision, I would ask that you delay that and do a site tour, do a property tour, where you actually, um, go into those backyards and, and look at the, the contours of the land. Um, one of the houses, in fact, it's the layer of the house that is depicted much closer to the factory line. The greenhouse is depicted pretty central, and if you do the, if you do the map with the size of the lots and the size of the houses, there's twenty-two feet, um, on the counter for, on the green property. So that, that gives about eleven feet on each side. So, um, setbacks are also in question as depicted by Mr. DeSistio. I, I, I do think that deciding this on anything else except the facts of the property wouldn't set a terrible precedent. We've had some zoning decisions over the course of, you know, years that have fed up, um, in subsequent applications, um, that, that has set forth precedent. And I think this, this would be exponentially a setback, pardon, pardon the term, but, um, for, for zoning in Barrington. So again, I applaud you for, um, your diligence in this application, and I just wanted to contact all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Is anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, yes, sir.
Yes, hello, I'm Catherine, I live on Brown.
Uh, I'm sorry, you've got to go slower than I was.
Catherine Quinn, Brown. Um, just want to...
And you swear?
I swear it's all, uh, the, the whole truth. I just want to reiterate how this, um, public comment section started, which was a true civics lesson in the true history of this land, which was stolen from the indigenous people who lived here by white men. And the laws and the ordinances they are holding here tonight that were designed by those same white men to perpetuate white supremacy. I just want to reiterate that, since it was already said, I thought maybe it was too hot a topic to bring it up. But I thank everybody in this room for being brave enough to speak the truth. This is unacceptable. I just want to share one thing that I heard recently from Dr. Alexander Scott. So this is the head of Rhonan Partner Health. I, I just read you from Leadership Rhonan. It's a pretty prestigious program that accepts leaders throughout the state. And we get great speakers, and we get to sit and ask them questions and pick their brains, and they share their knowledge with us. So during the health section, Dr. Alexander Scott came to our class and put on a presentation, a lot of stuff about the pandemic. She talked a lot about the, um, inequities of how it can have played out for people of color and low income people.
Perfect, are you addressing this application?
Yes, at the end...
And you mentioned the application.
Yes, at the end of our class, someone asked her, what do you think is the biggest health crisis in our state, Dr. Alexander Scott? What's the biggest health crisis that we... What's the biggest health crisis that we as leaders, as beneath this room, as leaders such as yourselves, can address and mitigate? And she told a story about a black woman and a white woman living next door to each other, that was so close to this story that I thought she was talking about my friend Candace. I almost went up to her and said, you spoke with Candace? It wasn't Candace, it was another family who had been subjected to something very similar to this. Dr. Alexander Scott told my class that the biggest health crisis in our state and in our country is systemic racism. This is an example of systemic racism. I just want to make sure that you all know, you are human beings, I know that, I actually know some of US human beings, right? This is escalating, this is escalating. The story that Dr. Alexander Scott told my class, the black woman ended up with a physical disability from the escalation of that unaddressed issue. If you do not address this now, it will continue to escalate, and whatever happens, it's on you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to speak about the application? I don't see any further. Tony, you did have one person speaking in opposition that you know that would give the applicant up to read your votes if you'd like.
If, if, I guess I have a brief, you can guess, I presented all the evidence I can, and everyone could hear me. Says what they had to say. And, you know, from a legal perspective, you would basically have three sections of the zoning ordinance here. Section 185-3, and, section 185-60, with these subsections, we talked about. Section 185-71, Level 3. And I'd ask the board to focus on the testimony that is agreed with, and, you know, and also the testimony that is very significant from Mr. Haming across the street. And that ties into section 185-69, see, that's about how it fits into the neighborhood. I think that Mr. Haming's testimony is very relevant on that point, he being across the street, the footer. I submit to the board that there are grounds under the veroncy and zoning ordinance to approve this application. The applicant is willing to have a timing set on this, if that is something that the board would consider in court. But I do think that this does meet the requirements, the ready for the dimensional variances, and the general purposes of the zoning ordinance. If you have any questions, then you have the answer, and I'd ask you to amend the application.
Thank you. At this point, there, I know, there is no further input from the applicant or the audience, unless we have questions, that sometimes does happen. I believe you would have deliberating and holding a motion, and to relate on the motion. I express concern purely very high, trying to establish the connection between the lead being requested and how that, how the facts in this situation, one, would be that, I stated it, I already stated that, yes, I feel the ring. I wish to give this up, I'm sure the police officers were straight in something. We are not civil court, we're limited to zoning matters. And as Mr. Roosevelt commented, we need to go through 185-69 with four subsections, and say, we find it satisfies us, or we can pause, and I'm still having a case of difficulty establishing that pause. So I'm making open this to the court, in person, all the members of the board, and oral motion, very good.
So there was a testimony by a fellow about a prior fence on Evelyn, and I just wanted to address that for a quick second. I was present to that meeting, I remember it, I'm actually the person on the zoning board who you came before the board and said, they already have a variance on that. And I remember the distinct reason why, it's because the zoning use of the adjacent property is developed, it is the transportation, it is the industrial bar of the town. That is, the zoning use is different from zoning use, which I would go to a veroncy. It was part of what I was addressing at home, looking for some zoning use difference that would allow us to bridge. I think in the back and forth we had with the applicant. Now, I did hear some things in there that bridged the gap for me, that tied the argument in a way. It was that essentially the grade on the adjacent property's color, and the adjacent house may be within the setback line, may be closer than a lot of all the people. Those are the two pieces that I've heard that bring this in the zoning ordinance.
The difficulty I have with the line on the family is that, we have all testimony, they were in part of anything submitted in advance, they've been given an opportunity to review and consider it. And we had basically testimony in the strong saying that that is obvious. And I don't have any background in that, so I don't know. I was looking to guess if the court could have a different consideration, if that had been part of the application originally, it would be easier to build a, a more difficult base on that. I'll remember the board, and everyone can be like.
So I agree with all of this, certainly, you talk, a lot of this, frankly, it reads
But why do you get closer to my energy, though?
A lot of the requests we use is based on the neighbor, and also it's based on association, not necessarily something to do with the land. You know, we've got pretty tough offenses in the past, we always recommend edges. Edges do a lot to mitigate noise, if they're a little taller, you can buy them, they're 6 feet, relatively, relatively cost effective. So there are options to accomplish what they're trying to do, that does not require the zoning variance. That's a good one. All the applications I've heard, this is the one that I wish I could not have heard. I cannot put it in here, it's called loosely a racist, privileged white man. I just had to say that. I struggled with this one, and I know, sitting on the audience, the audience doesn't always understand the reasons for our line of questioning. The line of questioning is to draw out answers that allow us to formulate findings of fact, to actually find the zoning reason for an application. So while it may seem like I was giving someone a hard time, I was actually looking for a solution. And I think if you think back, you were able to establish a couple of points that weren't brought up from the beginning. As a roll of the dice, I am going to make a motion for the purposes of discussion, to see if this can go over. And I'm going to make a motion to approve this application. And I'm going to make a motion to approve the application based on the fact that the applicant will have five years to have an eight-foot tall, which is a six-foot fence with a tube of lattice copper. And after those five years, it will need to be removed. For extended, by coming to the zoning board and getting another variance.
I'm going to seal, I'll say.
Okay. Here we go. Bear with me while I go through my minutes.
Before you vote, if further ado, does that include the entire portion of that?
Yeah, I see the minimus effect of the front yard versus the side yard in this case, so it's going to be the entirety of that. All right, the basis for my motion is that I find that the applicant is met the standard of 185-69, that the hardship points the applicant seeks to leave him due to the characteristics of the subject land and structure, not the general characteristics of the surrounding area, and is not due to a disparate economic disability of the applicant. Because in the testimony of the applicant, it seems that the invasion of the AC yard is higher allowing the neighbors to deal with the fence more easily. And that the neighboring house is closer to the setback line by testimony of 6 feet from the fence, which is closer than our standing district would provide for, which is 9% or 10% of the room, 9 feet or 10% of the furniture. That the hardsching is not a result of any prior action of the applicant, and is not resolved primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain. There is no testimony or evidence on the record that financial gain has anything to do with this. And there's also no evidence that there is prior action of the applicant that has resulted in this. That granting of the requested variance law altered the general characteristics of the surrounding area or inherently meant the purpose of the chapter or the comprehensive plan. There is testimony on the record that the fence is 40 feet from the front yard, so it's clearly deep into the setback. It has a minimal effect on the neighborhood, and we had testimony from the neighbor directed across the street, who says he actually enjoys the fence, the way that it looks. That the relief to be granted is the least believed necessary. There is testimony by the applicant that it started with a tenth of fence, overall height fence, and it was reduced to eight feet, and had a clear and definite impact on the issues between these properties. And I find that Evelyn also meets the standard of 185-71, that the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property shall amount to more than a year of inconvenience.
And any further comments when this is recorded?
This is, this is a really difficult one. And I found a sense that we're going to go into rush here. One of the things Tony said, and, yeah, Tony said that also struck me, is promoting the public health safety of general welfare as an overarching umbrella for the government. Anyway, even though that's not the 185-69 or 185-71 record, I think we should keep that in mind with this application. And that we've always operated under the concept that one application, application does set the precedent for other. These applications are on its own merit and completely independent. The fear of an application like this is that it opens the door to people using zoning to request to have taller fences. And I don't think that taller fences are a solution to anything. But I do see that as a big danger that I'll be, this is similar to this.
Well, I mean, I have read that it doesn't set precedence, but I wonder if there's a leverage for people to ask for a timing of the fence. And once the fence is up, you know, what happens then? If I do, then people can't have it, fence is down, I don't know, check it then. And then it might just keep building there, instead, it just might become a door. Especially when it comes to something that is more related to, you know, neighbors, if not something that's special to do with the land. So that's one concern on that.
I guess it is time to begin voting, and unfortunately it begins with the last, because they're on the other end of the table.
So I'm going to vote no on this application. I do not think that it has anything to do with something, and I think the hardship really comes from speaking to the neighbors. If it was someone else, I mean, all these authorities would not be an issue. And also, we talk about edges, hard buttons all the time, and that's, you know, that is an option that they can do, that does require relief, so I'm voting no. I'm voting in favor.
I'm voting in favor.
Thank you.
In favor.
Dave's motion and rationale is based upon the sworn testimony of the applicant during the hearing to require evidence with respect to elevation of the property and the neighboring house, as well as with respect to the distance of the house from the property line, also, which was not raised in any of the required inventory. I'm going to vote yes, based upon that sworn testimony, and no, and I have real concern about making decisions based upon something of that nature. I will probably move to continue this, give the applicant a chance to submit something in writing, but I don't think it's an option just to continue something of this nature. So, the application is approved 4-1, on that basis. Thank you.